I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I call the meeting to the corner. Do the oath of office for Custy Southwick and myself. You're standing over there.
You want to say it again?
Oh, you want to say it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna be the first. Yep, Nicholas Rayhan. I, Dale Menard.
I, Dale Menard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A village trustee.
A village trustee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nicholas Rayhan. I, Nicholas Southwick.
I, Nicholas Southwick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A village trustee.
A village trustee.
Okay, um, I'll now open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the board on Ross's Point tentative budget for year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Somebody would like to address the board. Um, so I'll close the public hearing at this time. And I will open the meeting to the public. Um, I have one person who wishes to address the board, Mr. Ron LeBlanc.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Ron LeBlanc, resident of Ross's Point for many years. You and O B and I know everybody here. As you know, or probably know, the owner of the property in kind of Lake Street took that property over ten years ago and developed it. We have some probably less than desirable people who develop. Now we have three taxpaying families in there plus a family person. And we have one small business we started in that property. And recently I had the opportunity to join forces with a partner and myself was interested in developing another small business in that property. Uh, one of the items we discuss is, which I've talked about before, so the trustee is purchasing the land to the west of my building between my building, our grand sewer plant. That gives us more for extension than my property, my house, most of the land. So there's not much room to do that. So that's, uh, and I talked about this before, but I never informally, but the board can handle how they want. But I'm interested in purchasing. I'd be glad to submit a proposal from my hand and we could negotiate whatever the village wants to do. So I can sell it and we can make plans on my end what we can do. That's not to, not tonight, but that's my, that's our intention of what we'd like to do.
I think you have the best thing to do is to submit a proposal for, for the board to look at.
Okay, great.
Consider.
Just to give you a little update on that, is in the past, we, uh, we were supposed to have somebody give us an appraisal on the property. And past administration, it just fell through and he never got done. So I think that's where we would have to at least get an appraisal on the property to figure out what their market value was. And then we could go forward. We're, we're waiting for documentation and having a meeting and it just never happened.
Like you submitted a proposal, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, at least we know that there's interest in the property.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
All right, I'll do that. This is all I have for today, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time?
Francis Stunsey, thirty-seven Smith Street. I'd like to find out if there's anyone in the village that has thought about clearing the brush and the debris and everything along Lake Street before the Fourth of July. It was done so late last year. If it's done properly, our village will look a lot better Fourth of July weekend. Is anyone considered doing that?
Usually had the prisoners do that.
Prisoners might do it, but somebody's got to approach them.
Well, yeah, we, we take and call them up and stuff. That the village administrator calls them up.
Should be done soon or else you're not going to get it done.
Well, it was done late last year and it doesn't look too bad right now. But some people on Lake Street don't want that cut.
Maybe they don't want it, but do they own it?
Last year it was done late, Mr. Stunsey, because of COVID and restrictions for the inmates. And they have been the ones that have done it in the past. So we did reach out to, um, John Zerlow at the Altona Correction Facility because they're the inmate from the Altona Correction Facility that come down. And, um, that's what was indicated because that work crew had been out of commission because of COVID. So they were just getting the program back up and running, um, late last year, so.
But we can check into it again and see if they can do it?
We can, um, I mean, our, our public works guys, I mean, we only have four people in public works. And they have some projects that they need to move forward with this spring and summer. So I really can't get the public works guys to, um, focus on, on Lake Street. Our only hope is to get the, uh, correction facility in Altona to assist us again this year.
Okay, um, no one else wishes to address the board?
Well, I will. Sharon Richards from seventeen Maple Street here in the village. Um, I'd like to find out what this chicken situation is, what's going on within the village. If the village is going to put forth a ruling that chickens are not allowed in the residential area of this village.
Well, right now they're not allowed. The vill-, uh, some people have approached the board and asked that we do allow certain amount of chickens. And we're in the process right now. We have some people for it, some people against it. We haven't really decided when and open.
Well, right now is when people are buying their little chicks. So that's why the village, the village has got to decide something.
They can't buy them right now until the board has passed or rejected a law, so.
Well, when is that going to happen?
We're not sure right now. We're still waiting for signatures to be, we have signatures.
There was a petition.
Against, we have signatures for, so now we're going to, right now we're our mayor, but we will, uh, probably by the next board meeting, we will inform the public when we're going to have a.
So is the board willing to let it go with like majority rules? I mean, if the people that want chickens outnumber the people that are against chickens?
We have to be a whole, we have to make up a law and stuff like that if we do it. And like the city of Plasberg did. We have to have like, you have to have a certain amount of land. The chicken has to have a chicken coop.
You don't have so many chickens?
Yeah, you can have so many chickens, you can have roosters, nothing like that. People that live in apartments can't have chickens.
It's, it's.
We've got to make up the laws for us.
Yes, it's not just that this board says, yes, we can have chickens, no, we can't. If we do say, yes, we have chickens, we have to put down laws and rules that people have to follow for zoning and everything else. So it's probably not going to be within the next month.
Okay.
Yeah, probably next year, really.
Yeah.
Okay, so people that have asked you if they can have their chickens, you have been, they have been told as of now, no?
No, there's been no decision made.
Okay.
Okay, are we?
It's at least two months left. It would be a minimum of two months because you have a public hearing. That needs to take place.
Okay.
You're gonna have to have a village attorney, they elect to do it, to draw up.
So when they have this village meeting, that's when the people can come and.
Public hearing.
Make voice their pros and cons about all this.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's when the board will make the decision either direction and then they will, you know, make the law for it.
Okay, so it'll be a couple of months, you say? Okay.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing now and we'll get into the regular session. Um, minutes of the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and the special meeting of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I believe each board member has copies. Is there any? Nothing anybody would like to make comment or change on this?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as both meetings as read, or printed, I mean.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have passed. Um, the bills?
We have no additions or deletions this evening.
Okay. Anybody wishing to comment on any of the bills?
I make a motion to pass the bill.
Second? I have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, correspondence. Mr. Lattimore?
I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I received an email from, uh, Mike Duffy and he asked it to be read. It is signed by Mr. Duffy. So it says, good afternoon, Administrator Lattimore. I'm writing to you to express my support of amending the village law to allow chickens, hence only within the village of Ross's Point. I have read the city of Plasberg law and think a similar law in Ross's Point would work. I feel that there's a value in allowing residents to have the land space requirement to apply for a permit. And the requirements in said law would really limit the number of properties even eligible to apply. It is worth review. Regards, Mike Duffy. Also, um, I provided the board, I received a petition from Scott Richner. And it's a petition in opposing of allowing chickens in the village of Ross's Point. And I provided a copy of the signed petition to, uh, the board. Also, um, I receive, I, I provided the board with, um, the zoning board of appeals from Pat Procat, um, the I two recommendations from the zoning board of appeals. So the board should have a copy of that. And the last thing that I provided the board was a letter from, um, Martines from sixty-four Maple from ERS. Um, asking the board to, um, review some, some of the, um, development programs that they would like to do at sixty-four Maple. And what they would ask the board to do is to have a special meeting with ERS members.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
That's all we have for correspondence. Okay, reports of the mayor and trustees. Um, first thing I have is the water resolution rate. Um, whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point deemed it necessary to amend the water rate to reflect current water department operations as follows. Um, effective June first, twenty twenty-three, um, I'm not going to go through all of them. I'm just going to say, uh, that the local household will be fifty seventy-five per month. Or is that, that's up a dollar a cent from last year?
Yes.
So it's up a dollar from last year. Need a motion to accept the water rate?
I make a motion. Roll call, no?
Roll call. You need motion first, right?
I make a motion.
I'll put forth the motion for resolution, uh, two zero twenty-three dash nine.
A second half.
And we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
President, er, aye.
Mayor LeBlanc.
Okay, and my second item is a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty-three and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, making appropriations for the conduct of the village government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas the board of trustees has met at a time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard. Therefore, be resolved that the tentative budget is here and after set forth and is hereby adopted. The several amounts stated in the column entitled Final Budget Adopted in Schedule One A through Schedule Two E E together with the amount set forth in the budget summary by fund found on page two are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified. The salaries and wages stated in Schedule Six, pages thirty-nine and forty are effective June first, twenty twenty-three for all employees. The union employee salaries and wages are negotiated through a signed labor contract with the Civil Service Employees Association. Um, do we need a motion to accept the budget, final budget? I make a motion to accept the final budget. A second? Okay, roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LeBlanc.
And the budget has passed. Okay. Now I have some resolutions for the fire department. Whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point, New York, wish to express, express their congratulations to Kevin Shagnon, who has celebrated thirty-five years of volunteer service to the Ross's Point Fire Department. And whereas Kevin began his career in the fire service where he has been a role model to many members of the department, having served as department captain, first lieutenant, training officer, first assistant chief, and second assistant chief, a position he currently holds. He has been company treasurer for numerous years, a position he currently holds. And whereas Kevin has been chairman of numerous committees within our department and company. And his dedication has been shown in his many acts of unselfish deeds, not only to our department, but to the residents of Ross's Point and neighboring communities. And therefore, be resolved, the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point does hereby congratulate Kevin Shagnon for achieving this milestone in his life and publicly thank him for the dedication he has shown to the Ross's Point Fire Department and the residents of the village. This resolution shall take effect immediately. And we need a, want a roll call vote? We need a motion to accept it?
I make a motion to accept it. Red?
Second? Roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, um, Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LeBlanc.
Then I have another. Uh, whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point, New York, wish to express their congratulations to Walt Laramie, who has celebrated twenty-five years of volunteer service in the Ross's Point Fire Department and thirty-two years of volunteer service to the Shazee Fire Department, for a total of fifty-seven years of volunteer fire service to his community. Whereas Walter joined the Ross's Point Fire Department on February sixteenth, nineteen eight, nineteen ninety-eight, with thirty-two years of previous service to Shazee Fire Department and began his career in the fire service where he has been a role model to many, many members of the department, having served as department assistant chief, department captain, department training officer, advanced emergency medical technician, CPR instructor, and chairman of numerous committees and currently serves as captain of rescue. And whereas, whereas his dedication has been shown in his many acts of unselfish deeds to the department and the residents of the community. Therefore, it be resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point does hereby congratulate Walt Laramie for achieving this milestone in his life and publicly thank him for the dedication he has shown to the Ross's Point Fire Department and our neighboring communities and the residents of the village. Need a motion to accept? I make a motion to put this resolution forward? A second? A roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LeBlanc.
I have another. Whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point, New York, wishes to express their congratulations to Dennis Roberts, who has celebrated forty years, forty years of volunteer service to the Ross's Point Fire Department. And whereas Dennis began his career in the fire service where he has been a role model to many members of the department, having served as company vice president, chairman of numerous fundraisers and currently serves as company secretary, a position he has held for numerous years. And whereas Dennis has been chairman of numerous committees within our department and company. And his dedication has been, has shown in his many acts of unselfish deeds, not only to our department, but to the residents of Ross's Point and neighboring communities. Therefore, be resolved that the village, the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point does hereby congratulate Dennis Roberts for achieving this milestone in his life and publicly thank him for the dedication he has shown to the Ross's Point Fire Department and the residents of the village. Need a motion to move this forward? I make a motion to put this resolution forward? In a second? A second? Roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LeBlanc.
And I have one more. Whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point, New York, wish to express their congratulations to Sally J. Smith, who is celebrating sixty years, yes, sixty, years of volunteer service to the Ross's Point Fire Department Auxiliary. And where, whereas Sally joined the Ross's Point Fire Department Auxiliary on May twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-two and began serving the community as an auxiliary member. Where she has been a role model to many members and has served many years as an officer and still participates in fundraising activities and other auxiliary functions. Whereas her dedication has been shown in her many acts of unselfish deeds to the auxiliary and the residents of the community. Therefore, be resolved, the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point does hereby congratulate Sally J. Smith for achieving this milestone in her life and publicly thank her for the dedication she has shown to the Ross's Point Fire Department Auxiliary and the residents of the village. Need a motion to move this forward? I make a motion to put this resolution forward? A second? Roll call vote?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LeBlanc.
And the resolution has passed. Okay, um, we have a legal notice for a public hearing to amend the sewer rates for twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, I need a motion, we're going to do this at next meeting. I'll need a motion to. To make a motion to authorize the clerk to publish, uh, a legal notice for a hearing? I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, notice passes.
Somebody vetoed it.
I guess so.
And I believe that's all I have for this evening. Uh, Trustee Arnold?
Uh, the only thing I have is up there railroad station, the windows in the turret up there are getting pretty black on the window sill because there, it's single pane glass window. And I think we need some star windows in there. If not, we're going to have a lot of damage in the next couple of years or so. We'll have to look at it. It'll have to be made because they're, they're rounded at the top and stuff like that, but we've got to do something up there.
So. Maybe we can get touch with like, um, Steve Lubomar, have him over and take a look? Probably what he thinks.
Get a poll.
Yeah.
And, uh, did you hear any more on the contractor for, uh, Mr. Lattimore on the crate center? No?
You mean for, uh, the.
Receiving stuff?
They have not returned any of my calls.
Oh.
Um, but, oh, currently, well, I'll tell you currently what, what's, what's happening. Um, because of the, the funding from Billy Jones, um, I'm currently getting estimates from Shazee Hardware to replace all the exterior doors and the windows here in the boardroom. Uh, we could do that through funding through Billy Jones. The other thing that we're looking at going through Billy Jones' grant is replace the flooring here in the boardroom. I know it looks good, but it, um, needs to be replaced. It's a little outdated. And replace the flooring in the warming room as well. That's, uh, seen its better days. And the other thing that we're looking at going through Billy Jones is we're currently getting an estimate for, uh, a turf to put over the, um, the rink in the fall or in the, for the springtime through fall. Um, currently, um, this is a Plasberg lacrosse team that's utilizing our facility. Um, they're having some issues in the city of Plasberg. Um, so they reached out to see if we'd be willing to rent them the civic center and I told them absolutely. We've had a lot of positive responses from them. I was out there just talking to them. And it's something that hopefully we can move forward and have the civic center, um, utilized a lot more than just the winter time. So, um, we're aggressively trying to, uh, to make this like twelve month a year building. So, and if Billy Jones comes through with us, um, like I said, I'm, I'm looking for a grant for turf to put over, over the rink in the, uh, this time of the year right through probably October. So I, I think that would be great. And I was talking to some of the parents from, uh, the Plasberg Lacrosse Club. And they said that they would be help, willing to help do fundraising activities for the village because they really liked it here, it's the first time that they've been here. So I think it's great, we're getting people from outside here to see what the village of Ross's Point has to offer. And they said they would help to do fundraising for us and, um, we could, uh, get like the flag football, that's becoming very popular as well, bringing that here. We can leave the boards and glass up because I don't want to take that down. It becomes a lot of extra work. Um, but that would work for flag football, indoor soccer and lacrosse. And we were talking, if lacrosse were to come up here, we could use our outdoor fields. They have some big tournaments that attract large crowds in the summertime. We could utilize our outdoor fields and then utilize the indoor field so the tournament could take place inside and outside. So, I mean, I'm trying to work on a lot of different things for this facility to make it, uh, a lot more profitable than what it has been. And there's been a lot of people that have been helping this, um, John Rodriguez, he's been, um, um, very helpful. It puts a lot of contacts and Benny's been involved in this as well, so, um, we're all aggressively working.
Now, is, is the rink, is that big enough for lacrosse or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we used to have lacrosse here years ago.
I guess the crate is totally shut down.
Yeah, and we tried to get Benny and I, Adam, and, um, John, Bernard, we went to the crate because we wanted to get the turf that they had at the crate. And, um, they want to give it to us. They wouldn't even sell it to us.
Well, at that Plasberg, they voted to tear it down, didn't they?
And that's why we wanted to see, we could take some, like, we were looking at the bleachers because we felt their bleachers were newer than ours, where we could get their, the crate bleachers and put them, retrofit them here, um, but.
They've already sold it all.
They, they would rather let it go to be demolished.
Oh, so they, they're not even stripping the usable contents?
No, they sold everything to demolition company.
And the demolition company doesn't want to sell it to you?
I've reached out to them and, uh, they have not returned any of my calls. So we found some good stuff right now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a lot of nice stuff in there.
That we could have utilized here within this facility.
That's scandalous.
Oh, it's probably a question of why they're doing it.
I think that's what it may boil down to.
Yeah. If they sell it to you and then something happens, then it's cheap to just get rid of it.
That, that's probably.
It's a lot of billions.
But everything's, uh, I think positively moving forward.
It'd be good to keep this village.
It was nice to see all the cars here this time of the year.
Yeah, I wondered, I thought all the chicken people were here.
Trust me, though.
It's coming someday.
What I have tonight is, I'm looking for authorization for travel for Keith, John, Jerry and Brian to go to Peru on May third. This is for.
This is for their contact hours for their water licenses. So I need, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's passed.
I had a, I had something else on the agenda for an executive session, but that needs to be put on hold until the mayor is present. The last thing I have is I talked to the public works supervisor today, and I asked him the question that everybody's asking is when the sweeping is gonna start, and he's starting on Wednesday. So, they're gonna start cleaning up the roads. I noticed that people have been putting piles out there, trying to get ahead of it, but hopefully, uh, it won't take them too long. They have all their equipment, all serviced, it's ready to go, and, uh, I think it won't take them long to clean up. This summer is gonna be very aggressive because the county contacted us, and they do our blacktopping, and we can't wait till fall to do the blacktopping, they want the blacktopping done by, between June, uh, June and July. So, they're trying to reach out for the shared service to see who needs what done. And in our budget, we have, um, proposed to do Woodhaven, Lakeview, and Trayon Drive. And, um, so it's gonna be done between June and July. So their schedule is gonna be pretty tight this summer with the spring cleanup, with the sweeping, so. Like, like Administrator says, we only have four guys in our public works, so they're gonna be strung out, they're gonna be busy, so.
They gotta put, they need to put curbing down on Trayon Drive, which is gonna take some time.
Yes, that's also in the budget, is to redo the curbing on Trayon Drive, so. And it all has to be done before June.
Or the.
June or July, you know, so they're scheduled to come, and they're not waiting till fall, because they want to get their own work done. Where, you know, they come here, they go to Champlain, they go all different areas, and throughout the county, and they can't wait till fall. Everybody wants to wait till fall, but problem is, the list gets so big that they just don't have time to do their own work, so. So they set the schedule this year. So that's, that's all I have to report.
Come in. Trustee Southwick, for this evening.
I just want to say to, uh, thank Joe Rodriguez for his service to the village, and wish him and his family the best, and I want to thank the trustee, trustees and administration for the warm, warm welcome. Looking forward to serving the village.
Thank you. Um, other reports? Jonathan, Chris, do you have any to note for report?
No, I don't.
Arsene, no? John?
No.
Okay. Um, I'll open the meeting to the public one more time before we close.
Uh, Scott Risher, sixteen Craft Street. Uh, just wanted to add a note on the, uh, opposition to chickens petition. Um, that was not a door-to-door solicitation petition, that was, um, something that was thrown out to the public, and people contacted us, as in people who were holding the petition to sign it. So it wasn't a, you know, a forced or coerced or any kind of pushy thing, that was all people that, um, reached out to us. And there was a hundred and four signatures in person, and five people that were out of the area that wanted their name on it, and it was noted on the petition.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is Carmine Del Cerro on Ross's Point on Pearl Street. Um, it's more of a question rather than, uh, who's responsible at the Village of Board for the economic development of the village?
That would be the.
That would be, like, ERS, right? Is that developing for where the five years live? So they're in Manhattan, right? That's where they're located. So who in the village is, is there a committee, is there anybody that's doing anything to advance the economic issues of the village in terms of tourist, tourists, or, uh, attractions, or any kind of stuff like that? I'd like to know who's, who's in charge of that.
Would be the board.
So is it the board?
Yeah, I mean, ERS, there, there's two partners, okay, so there's Andrew Stalka, and then there's Mark Haynes. Mark is located in, uh, Massachusetts, Andrew's down in the New York City area. Um, we have very close contact with ERS practically on a daily basis, and we are working with them every day. And they're also working with, um, CDC Realty as far as to help, um, promote the property.
But it's only for that property, correct?
It's only for that property.
I'm talking about as a village in general. Other types of promotions, of activities, of economic activities to generate money for the, for the village. It, it, who's responsible, is there somebody responsible at the board, or?
We have, we have like committees, like the Fourth of July, we have a Fourth of July committee that runs.
So is there a committee specifically to the economic development of the village?
The overall.
No.
There is not?
No.
Mr. Latremar, could you expand on what the, we're in conjunction with the town doing the promotions?
Oh, as far as, right, so, right now, um, the town of Champlain and the village of Champlain and the village of Ross's Point, uh, because the villa, the two villages are essentially part of the town of Champlain. So right now, we're correlating together, um, with the town of Champlain, where we are going to start to economically promote all three municipalities together. So we're spending some money for economic development. And, um, we have some, um, advertisement that we have done in phase one, but that advertisement has not been published yet because it has not been approved.
Okay, so how, how do we find out what's in the works for the, for the development and these opportunities and these?
So my recommendation would be to contact the village office, and talk to myself as the administrator, and I can tell you what we're doing and what we're working on.
Very good, thank you.
I do, I have another question about sixty-four Maple Street. What is there to develop? Because it was several years ago, about three, four years ago, when the village was going through a law because of that property and the discussions, I want to say it was a let turnout, but I'm not positive. They provided copies, it was all on the village Facebook page and everything, and it was talked about here that the state, there's paperwork on file in Clinton County at the courthouse and everything, that nothing can be done with that land. Nothing can be built on that land. The ground cannot be disturbed because of the contaminants that are in it. So what is there to develop besides the buildings that are already there?
Could you break around of some period points? So, um, the first and foremost thing that we need to look at is there's three buildings that currently exist on, at sixty-four Maple. One of the buildings is currently occupied, so we have two buildings that have potential of having tenants occupy those buildings. So, I think before they go outside development, you need to get the buildings that are present occupied first. So they're, they're current, we're currently working on that. The thing that has, um, and, and I wish, uh, Mark was here, uh, I mean, um, from CDC, because one of the biggest problems that we've had is the I two, the way it's been zoned. So zoning took place in the Village of Ross's Point in approximately nineteen ninety. At that time Pfizer was full blown, and, you know, that was the only thing that was ever gonna go on sixty-four Maple, right? Nobody would ever pictured a million years that Pfizer was gonna go out. So if you look at the zoning restrictions for the I two, it primarily just allowed pharmaceutical and maybe some warehousing, which was part of the pharmaceutical, is the way that it was zoned. So, then once that went, the zoning was never changed. So every time a business wanted to come to Ross's Point, oh, you have to apply for a, a use variance permit. Well, a use variance permit is very difficult to get approved, because there's certain criteria that you have to meet in order to get the, uh, the permit approved. So that's why the, the Board of Trustees asked the zoning board of appeals to take a look at the I two zone and see what should be done to loosen the restrictions on that property to allow new business to come into the village. So currently, the Board of Trustees has received from the chair of the zoning board of appeals, Pat Burkett, and the rest of the board members, um, came up to an agreement as far as things that they felt that the Board of Trustees should consider, um, to allow. It's gonna make it a lot easier for business to come into the Village of Ross's Point. For example, that warehousing company that's in there right now that's doing shelving for the Walmarts in the U.S., um, they had to apply for a use variance. Well, when they found out that they had to apply for a use variance, they pulled the reins back and said, oh, that's too much work for us, we'll go over to Vermont, or we'll go to Plattsburgh. That's when the mayor and I got involved and said, well, don't give up that easy, because we think, feel that this is a good fit for the village, and it moved forward and, and it's worked out very well. There's quite a few employees there, and, uh, the warehouse is getting pretty full, so, and we're gonna be expanding to additional contracts, which means they may end up taking another building. So that's how their, this business is expanding here in Ross's Point. So, now back to, once those buildings are filled, what happens? Um, ERS can reach out to Pfizer, and Pfizer can permit certain things to take place on that property.
Pfizer still holds the, the, the.
They, they still, they still.
Whether it gets developed or not?
They, they have some control of the property, so.
But it's what's in the soil, what's in the earth.
Correct. So, from my understanding, there are some slabs that are still on the property. Those slabs can be utilized for additional warehousing, other manufacturing type facilities, um.
Meaning that it's a foundation?
Yes, they can build on that.
On the building twenty-five, I've already received it. In fact, as I got it today, another application for renovations to do that second building, well, actually, there are three buildings in building twenty-five, and they're working on the second building. Uh, gotta go over the details with John Poiseau, the gentleman's gonna do the, the repairs and things up there, but apparently they have another, uh, someone else on the line to come in there, so.
So he, yeah, he's one of the original contractors, so. Um, so we, we're aggressively working, and by making some of these changes on the I two for the zoning, I think it's going to, um, help build, uh, that sixty-four Maple Street. And if, if Matt was here, Matt could explain it to you as well, Matt, where, from.
In the meantime, can ERS just put a simple layer of topsoil down and throw grass seed on it? I mean, I can't imagine the houses that live right there, and an elementary school right on the other corner.
Well, I've had conversations with code enforcement officer Cooper because I agree, um, it's, uh, needs some TLC on the outside, and Mr. Cooper.
It's not just the aesthetics, it's the help.
Yeah, and Mr. Cooper did give them a violation to give them until the spring, John?
Yes.
To do the cleanup outside after our conversation.
Andrew Stalka's company is still trying to contact someone to come in here and put, have a regular maintenance crew type to keep the lawns up, but the only thing is, he says he doesn't want to cover up the slabs, because I haven't decided which ones might be appropriated back in to be used.
Correct, that's the problem.
Well, they can still do, do something with the yardage all around those foundations.
And one of the biggest things that John and I, after talking to, um, Andrew last fall, when he was served the violation, because they're no different than anybody else, there's certain requirements within the village, you know, for, for, um, brush or lawn height, so, um, we served them violation. Um, their problem that they have is just like a lot of other businesses, they can't find companies to go out and do the work. They hired one company and what did they tell us, John, they?
Yeah, but they're, they're willing to pay, but they just can't get anybody. I contacted everyone I knew that was in the business, they might be interested. And, uh, there's a couple, the guy that's doing the lawns now, he's got a contract. There's one other gentleman up there that's doing some maintenance, of course, the FOMO people have got some other people in there now, in the other buildings. But it's just that really, actually, they've only been there, they've only probably been in there for a few months now, and things are actually starting to shape up in that manner, which we didn't do before.
So we have been working on, on that.
My turn. Hey, you done? Harold Ashline, one thirty-sixth Lake, you guys know me as Happy. Uh, exciting times, we got a business going into the old Antilles place, that's pretty darn cool, right? And that's, you know, there's been a lot of posts on Facebooks, and everybody is excited and stuff like that. And then you got another post where people are saying, we got no place to park downtown, and now we're putting in, you know, we want that place to succeed and stuff, and there's already a parking problem down there. You know, the elderly are gonna want to park in front of Antilles, are those spots gonna be available? I don't know. But, you know, so, and I think the frustration of the person that put out the post was I got nobody to call. People are not doing what they're supposed to do, or what they've been told to do, and I got nobody to call and nobody to enforce it. I mean, have you guys thought it had what the parking problem is gonna be at, at that place? I don't live down there, I don't park down there, but it seems like we got a problem that's gonna be coming, and I hope it's, you know, been thought of in advance. And part two of my question is, that's what leads me into the chickens. With, people are worried that the laws just aren't gonna be enforced. Who's gonna, who's gonna enforce if somebody throws in a rooster, or two roosters, or three roosters, or whatever? And they got nobody, they got, don't, they don't have a village police to call. They have village police in Plattsburgh, I mean, yeah, Plattsburgh, they have city police. Are those guys involved? I don't know, but I, that's what I hear from people. Or they say, yeah, okay, we can have roosters and chickens in the city, geez, I hope they're not next to me. And that's what everybody said, eighty, eighty-five percent of people, they say, well, if it's not next to me, I really don't care. And, and that's, that's the problem, is people are very frustrated because they're afraid of what's coming, you know? And I just, I wanted to see if you guys had a comment on the Antilles stuff. It's exciting, hope it works out.
Well, back in the fifties, they had all kinds of businesses to downtown, and you never had a problem with parking.
But there is now, evidently.
But there's also a parking lot right behind that restaurant.
Elderly are not gonna want to park back there to get in the Antilles, just like the old days, my mother wouldn't have done it, you know?
No, because it, that going down that driveway is slippery, you get down to the sidewalk, and when it's.
No, that's, that's somebody else's property, you shouldn't be walking across there.
Well, if you're gonna be parking in the village parking lot, even to walk over to the sidewalk, it's on a downgrade. Um, it's watery, icy, muddy, everything, you go walk there in the spring months and the winter months. Um, you get older people walking with canes and walkers or whatever, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, you know, agreeing with what Happens saying. Um, and then all the people that do park on the village street, and a lot of the people that live in apartments are using the village parking lot, and I don't, I mean, I can see it right from the backside of the windows of my house, and there's generally quite a few cars parked there. There's people that are parking boats there, and they're there all winter long, and when they're not using them. Um, I mean, are these people paying a parking rental? You know, to store their boats on the village parking lot? Um.
So you, you brought up a good point.
Maybe if I have a boat, I'm gonna start parking it down there.
The way, the way that it works, Sharon, is somebody can apply for a parking permit in the village, and the village can either grant or deny that parking permit. There's a zero, zero charge affiliated with the parking permit. So, I understand.
Well, with more businesses coming to downtown though, Chris, the boats, I'm sorry, you know, we have facilities in this community where businesses that people pay to have their boat stored and parked.
Completely understand, but part of the village code is, and I don't know why it was ever designed that way, but it's a zero fee for a parking permit, because Arsene and I had conversations about that this, this winter, because we had some parking issues, and it's the items that you're talking about right now. And if they had a parking permit, then they were permitted to park.
Well, so that's gonna have to change.
Their cars, and their cars, or whatever else it was. Um, so, but I, I.
That may be something that we'll have to look at in the future with our parking permits.
Yeah, I mean, I think it leaves the elimination.
People that, you know, you know, if they want to store their boats there over the winter, or whatever, you know?
Something like that shouldn't have been prevented.
No, exactly. And to, just to touch on your question or your comment, Happy, about the chickens, that's why we're going to have an open public forum, because, like you said, a lot of people say, well, I don't care if they're not next to me, but they're going to be next to somebody.
Thank you.
So if you don't want them, you need to come and voice your opinion, that's what this board wants to hear, whether you're for it or whether you're against it. this board wants to hear, whether you're for it or whether you're against it, that's how we're going to make our decision.
Thank you.
So when we have a public forum, we hope we get some turnout.
So how will this public forum be announced? Is it gonna come in our utility bill?
It will be published in the paper, that's how it legally has to be, it's gonna be published in the paper. And I've been putting public hearing notices on the digital sign here, and we also post it in the village office. I mean, those are the legal ways of, of posting it. And I, yeah, thank you, and, and Arsene always publishes on the, the village website.
It should be on the website.
So, um, so I mean, if, if we start publishing one thing on the utility bills, you know, is that precedent, we have certainly everything else.
It becomes a news letter every month, yeah.
It's, uh, I'd rather not start that process, but the other thing, to go back to what you were discussing, um, I, in my own personal opinion, one of the biggest mistakes the village made was to abolish the police department. And I think the people are now seeing the effects of abolishing it. Yes, it was costly to the residents, but you had that, um, twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week police force available, and you had Sarge, and everybody knows Sarge, Tom, even if he's off-duty, if there was a problem, you would call him, and he would come down to the station, get the car, and he'd go out and take care of it. I have talked to trustee Pelkey, and we've discussed the possibility of adopting some constables within the village, and, you know, maybe we can reach out to some retired, um, law enforcement people, see if they'd be able to come on, come on board, so if there's non-need basis for somebody, we would have that availability for the village residents. I mean, we had a truck on Lake Street that was parked with no plates and garbage on it. The state police sheriff's department, nothing we can do, it's, it's a village ordinance, so, I mean, I had to take the initiative to contact a towing company and come and move that truck off of a state highway.
So, the village, what, it's a proposal, in a sense, that should be addressed over the course of the next six months to a year. We want, we should have a village police reinstated, even if they're constables, you're not looking at volunteers.
No.
They would be paid positions.
And that's gonna be a costly venture, um...
But I think over the course of time, since they did away with the village police here, people are finding out there's so much more your state police don't wanna get involved with.
There's such a shortage.
Yeah.
Without the sheriff's department, they, you know, for a long time, we only had...
That was, that was our problem, why we got rid of the police department in the first place, we had one police officer.
For three years.
For three years. That worked eight to four. He wasn't seven days a week, he was five days a week, and then when the shared services came into effect from New York State, we found it beneficial, more beneficial for us. They took, the sheriff took in our one police officer, and we just kind of abolished it. We couldn't get anybody, anybody to come and work here.
Well, that, but it's, more than likely, it's the pay scale, it's what this village can afford to pay.
Right, and that's the thing.
It's just like when you say you only have four ground crew people, it's because you, to advertise, to hire more, you can't offer the pay these people want.
Exactly. We can't offer the same thing with our electric crew right now.
Right, right.
We can't get anybody to come in our electric crew.
Right.
Because Nice Egg is just paying double of what we're paying.
That is true.
And we just can't afford to pay that in this little village, unless you want your taxes to go up ten dollars.
So does the state have any programs where they're helping these small villages?
No.
With these things, with grants and everything?
No, that's why we're talking to our, we're talking to Billy Jones.
Yeah, yeah.
And Trump, trying to get him to help out a little bit, because, you know, these
little municipalities can't afford the salaries.
Correct, every, every municipality is having trouble.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no grants from the state government, not the state government, federal government.
No. Or a state.
No.
Yeah. Really? No, we just, we can't, we're having a hard time competing with...
Excuse me.
I get it, and you're coming back to having to expand your tax space, right? There's, there's not always a spot, that's why I asked about...
And Arsene, Arsene gringes every time you say that.
Well, not expand the tax space, and add, there's other ways of expanding tax space than charging the residents of the village.
Okay, so we're all set?
Back to, back to Happy's question about the downtown parking, um, there's all kinds of signs down there that says two-hour parking, but if you notice, like, a lot of the people that even work downtown are parking on Main Street. I mean, it'd be nice if they parked up in the village parking lot and walked down to their work, because they're there for eight hours, and then give you the, it give you the spaces on Main Street for these people to visit, 'cause like you say, you know, how many barber shops we have, or hair salons we have, I mean, people are circling, looking for a place to park, but when you have apartment, uh, people that rent apartments that are parking on Main Street for eight to ten hours a day, but, back to no one to enforce the two-hour parking, because it's a village, is that correct? It's a village law.
Correct.
That's why we're looking at maybe, possibly, getting some part-time constables that could write the tickets, or have those, or have those vehicles removed, or at least give warnings. I mean, we need to do something.
Well, I was talking about my mom, she, she wouldn't have been able to make the walk from the village parking down.
No.
Is it, is it set up in the code or something that, I'm talking for the new business here, but, uh, that they have three spots, that the elderly or whoever can, can, they don't...
The, the problem is, it's a state highway, and the state tells us what, what we can do and what we can't do on Main Street. We can't even put in a sign without their permission, never mind trying to reserve a spot for handicap or something, for handicap or anything. It's, it's, it's a rough road.
And look at the parking that we lost when they put in the new pedestrian crossing signs. I don't know if you've noticed those on downtown.
Because there's so much footage from the corner of that.
Correct, I mean, you've lost two and a half parking spots from where they put the new pedestrian crossing signs.
I'm just trying to forewarn you guys of what's already out there, and the place hasn't even opened, and nobody's, and nobody's blaming the new place, everybody wants Antilles to, you know, the old Antilles to work out, everybody loved that place. If the new place comes in, you know, they're gonna need parking, I hope they, you know, I hope it works out.
If, if people on Facebook don't like the parking here, maybe should, they should go to Margaret Street.
Yeah.
And, and use the parking meters or all the restaurants down there to take away multiple parking spots.
Parking meters? How come the village doesn't?
That would have to be a state highway.
All permitted to the state.
Gotta be all permitted.
Oh, so they, they wouldn't do it? The state wouldn't allow it? Cause I remember, there was an old picture of Ross's Point, they did have parking meters down.
Yeah, the state has changed that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to make the general point, is, is, they don't, the people that are upset fear they have nobody to call.
Hopefully, the word of mouth will get out on Facebook or whatever, and maybe some of these people that are renting these apartments will park in their own backyard, or their own parking facilities, rather than the prime spots on Main Street. I mean, that's all we can do is put the word out. Um, we don't have the authorization to enforce the laws of the two-hour parking, I wish we could. Um, as the administrator said, there was a truck on Main Street with no plates on it, and garbage in the back of it, and he took the initiative to have it towed, because the state police and the sheriff won't do it.
So I guess you, to answer your question, that people have nobody to call, I guess you can call the village office, I mean, and we will try to address it as a board, or...
Well, it doesn't bother me, I'm not down there. I'm just saying, you know, it's out there, and people are upset, and actually, somebody did respond, I'm gonna park where I want, you know? Are you aware of that post I'm talking about? It didn't, it didn't go well.
Okay. Anybody else, or should we address the board?
Hi, George Walker, 62 Montgomery Street. Um, I was struck with the four proclamations that you read. I mean, quick math, it's over a hundred and fifty years of service.
Yes.
And I wondered what we did for those individuals, whether we present them with a rain certificate, or just...
Oh, we do.
Yes, we do.
Apartment banquet, we have a banquet coming up, uh, the first Saturday in May. That's like me, I got fifty-two years in the fire department.
Well, thank you for your service, but I can remember last year we had this conversation, and it was a piece of paper.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't want to see that happen again.
It's not one of them. Mr. Latimer is taking care of that, isn't he?
Yes.
And be professional this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Very good comments from the public.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Although in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you.